Is the mic always on or always off?
As long as it's green, it's on and you can hear the controller from the booth.
Got it. Thanks.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, April 12th. Since the election was this past Saturday, the first order of business is the reorganization of the committee. We will start with nominating a chairperson. I nominate Mr. Dan Biggins as the chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's all of us. Onto you, Dan.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Maroni. Thank you to my colleagues on the school committee. I would like to nominate Mrs. Jill Maroni as vice chairman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That is a vote. I would also like to nominate Mrs. Emily Davidson to be secretary.
Second.
Do I have a second? I'm sorry, couldn't hear you down there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is a vote. Now for subcommittees, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Emily Davidson and Mrs. Jamie Hennessy to the appointment to sick leave committee.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. For the wellness committee, I thought good and prudent and appropriate to nominate Dr. Melissa Small. We need one member for that position.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That too is a vote. Alcohol and drug violation subcommittee. I'd like to nominate Dr. Small and myself for that one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. For athletic department liaison, I'd like to nominate myself to continue in that role.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Fiscal policy committee, I would also like to nominate myself to that role.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. WRPS community broadcasting liaisons, for which we need two members. I'd like to nominate Dr. Small and Mrs. Emily Davidson.
Second.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you. Early graduation, I would like to nominate myself to that position.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Cable advisory committee, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Hennessy for that position.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, ladies. That's a vote. Chairman of budget subcommittee, I'd like to nominate myself for that position.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's a vote. Energy subcommittee, we need to nominate two members to that. I thought we would nominate Mrs. Davidson and Mrs. Hennessy to that.
Second.
Thank you very much. Secretaries collective bargaining subcommittee, if we could nominate Mrs. Maroni and Mrs. Davidson for that.
Second.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Teachers collective bargaining subcommittee, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Maroni and Mrs. Hennessy.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Custodians collective bargaining, I would like to nominate Dr. Small and Mrs. Jamie Hennessy.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Cafeteria workers collective bargaining subcommittee, I would like to nominate Mrs. Emily Davidson and myself, Mr. Biggins.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. That's a vote. Power professionals collective sub bargaining subcommittee, I would like to nominate Dr. Small and Mrs. Hennessy.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. That's a vote. Daycare collective bargaining subcommittee, I would like to nominate Mrs. Jill Maroni and myself, Mr. Biggins.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. That's a vote. And last but not least, I would like to move that we use Robert's Rules of Order for our meeting formats.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. That is a vote. Next on tonight's agenda, after that kind of long one, is the acceptance of the meeting minutes of March 22nd, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That is a vote and one abstention. Seeing nothing under correspondence, we will move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Prong.
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Morrow Small, Dan Biggins, and Jill Maroni on winning election to the Rockland School Committee. I think it goes without saying that our work is incredibly important and I'm looking forward to working with each of you as we move forward. I'd also like to thank Mr. Mills for his 18 years of service and he will be missed. I had two conversations last week with Senator Keenan regarding Rockland's Chapter 70 situation. He's had meetings with head educational components of the Senate and found out that the legislature has set aside $40 million to address the issue that we're dealing with. And just to refresh everyone's memory, our enrollment in Rockland is down by 75 students this year. It's approximately 3.5 percent. The state average has also declined by 3.5 percent. So schools across the Commonwealth have seen a decline in enrollment. This decline in enrollment changes our Chapter 70 formula and the amount of money that we receive. So we went from being a Student Opportunities Act town where we were getting a tremendous amount of money because of the Student Opportunities Act, 1.6 million, to 68,000 because of a very small drop in enrollment, just because of the way the algorithm works. So we've been working with the House Ways and Means Committee and anyone else who will listen to us to talk to them about, could something be done for communities who are being hurt by this Chapter 70 situation? So Senator Keenan has been incredibly gracious and keeps staying in touch with both Jane and I about what's going on. And he called me on Friday to let me know that, again, the legislature has set aside $40 million. The problem is, it's a $120 million problem. So $40 million, what the senator and I are hoping is that that is a down payment or a first installment and that there will be more money to come. But at this point, they've set aside the 40 million. The other piece of the equation is ESA III. So ESA I and ESA II, as you remember, were federal funds that we received to help. ESA III is a third installment of this and should be quite a sizable amount of money. I asked the senator, do you suspect that perhaps the House Ways and Means is saying, look, schools and towns are about to come into all of this money through ESA. Perhaps they don't need all of this additional help with Chapter 70. So we're all looking into our crystal balls trying to figure out what's going on, but we do know that the legislature has taken some action to rectify this situation, which is hopeful. But $40 million is not $120 million, so I don't know how exactly how that's going to work, nor does Senator Keenan. But again, we really appreciate the senator advocating for us, advocating for Rockland, and for staying in touch with us so much on this issue. And then finally, I'd like to thank Linda Miniglia, congratulate Linda Miniglia, and the entire Student Services Department for having completed their comprehensive program review by DSE just this past week. This is a multi-year process, something that they worked very, very hard on and spend a lot of time. There's a lot of interviews involved. I was interviewed. And that process is now behind us, so they have three years before it begins again. But they did a fantastic job and we're looking forward to receiving the report from the state on that. But that is behind us. And that is the superintendent's report.
Any comments or questions from the committee? Thank you, Dr. Prong. Hopefully we'll continue to work with Senator Keenan and the legislature, not only towards the very helpful one-time monies that we hopefully will continue to be receiving, but certainly more diligent work towards Chapter 70 and, you know, helping us from the state level down build sustainable school budgets. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Seeing nothing under audience, we'll move to item six on tonight's agenda, which is reports. We have monthly reports for March.
Prom.
Wait, prom.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the addition. We do have an addition here to the agenda. We have an update to prom.
Yeah, that's my fault. I should have put that under, I probably should have put that under the superintendent's report. I apologize. Dr. Harrison, could you give us an update on the prom?
Sure. Thank you for attending us tonight. A week and a half ago, the state Department of Ed put out guidance. We were expecting for months that they would be publishing guidance on a prom. They kept saying prom guidance is coming. And they ended up a week and a half ago coming out with guidance, but the guidance said they're recommending that there's no prom. So we were, the principals in Massachusetts were definitely caught off guard and by surprise because if you're finding out in March, April that you're not having a prom when you've already made plans to move forward, that's definitely a challenging thing. We're in the ballpark where we're lucky as a small school that we're able to have an outdoor gathering with 150 students, whereas a lot of schools who have a senior class bigger than 150, that becomes very problematic for our neighboring towns. So a lot of our neighboring towns are not moving forward. But what I wanted to do is just walk through guidance, a guidance document with you. You should have a copy of it. But the thing I want everybody to know on the committee is the state does not recommend that schools have proms, but rather that you substitute alternative celebrations for seniors. If schools, and I'm reading from the Department of Ed, this is something you do not have in front of you, but from the Department of Ed, if schools do choose to hold proms, it is recommended that they delay the prom until at the end of the school year, ideally delaying until such time so that most students attending the prom would have been vaccinated. So then they go on to suggest that if you are going to hold a prom, you must follow the guidance from the state, which is for event guidance and the travel advisory guidance. So I met with our student leadership, the class officers, a week ago. I met with the senior class advisor, Ms. Morrison and Ms. Paulding, the assistant principal. And then we met with the Board of Health Agent, and we came up with this guidance, which you should have. The Board of Health Agent is supportive of a prom with this document, if we follow this guidance. So we did this together, and the student leadership was also a part of this as well. I do think it's important that I do go through this document, only because I'm recommending we move forward with the outdoor prom, which is against the DSE guidance. So I just think it's important everybody has an opportunity to see what this would be like if you support it. The big things on the first page for signups, we would have the kids sign an acknowledgement form that basically says three things. The first is, you're not going to go and have pre-prom picture parties before with families. And that's obviously the honor code, honor system. The second one is, you're going to follow the guidance in this document for what happens during the prom. And the third bullet is that they're not going to have any after-parties. And you may say, no after-parties, no pre-parties. Well, we did put in if the kids wanted to get together with six or more people, or I think it says up to 10, because that's what for a private event indoors is, for 10. We stuck to that number. So if a table at dinner wanted to go and do pictures of six, that's fine. So you'll see that number is there. And it says after-parties not to exceed 10. Outside guests, this was something the Board of Health Agent advised us on, is that we should require, if they are going to take an outside guest, not from Rockland High School, that they receive a negative test three days before the prom and send that documents to us so that we have evidence of that. We went back and forth on whether to allow outside guests. The seniors felt very strongly that they wanted that option to have outside guests. That was one of their sticking points that they really wanted. So the health agent, Ms. Flip, said that would be the best way to do it safely. The guest list, we'd need to go to the Board of Health with all their contact information, the first name, last name, in the event we needed to do contact tracing. Symptom-free, under symptom-free, you'll see that we're going to have every single attendee sign a health attestation form that basically says they're symptom-free. It walks you through all the different symptoms. So it will slow entry on the night of the prom, but it will kind of have them do one last self-check. Sanitizing is pretty self-explanatory. We'll just have tons of sanitizer available. Since it would be held outside in a tent, a large tent in the parking lot, we would have the bathrooms inside the high school open so that they could use hand soap and water. We probably would use those bathrooms over the ones in the stadium, just because they're a little bit nicer inside. Mask wearing on the second page, all seniors and guests would have to wear a mask. We would not allow gators. The gators are really much harder to keep up, and it becomes a policing issue, which is very hard when it's dark out inside, outside the tent. So we would have them wear masks, except for three instances, when taking a professional picture with the photographer that we have through our school, eating dinner or dessert, obviously, at their assigned table, and when taking a mask break at their mask break area. Social distancing, it would be limited to 150 attendees. We've done an inventory, we've done an assessment with the seniors, and we're up to about 140. So that's with everybody bringing a guest. So that worked out pretty well. We'd have six feet markings. We would do what we typically would do for a big event. We'd have markings on the dance floor. We would have one-way signage. Obviously, not the traditional prom we've all experienced, but I always like to say it's better than, better than no prom. So that's how social distancing will work. We'll just have a lot of signage, and we'll remind the kids as well. The students have been excellent all year, so with this senior class, I'm just very comfortable with them and that they can follow all this guidance. For arrival and mingling, the seniors will have two different phases. We'll have last names A through K arrive at 6:30. We'll have last names L to Z arrive at 6:50. The check-in will be slow, but I think it's going to be very thoughtful. We're going to do the health attestation form I spoke of. We are going to do a temperature check. That came also at the recommendation of the Board of Health Agent, which I agree as well. Check and make sure their masks are on, sanitize when they come in, and then we would follow our normal substance abuse prevention, where we have them empty their coats to make sure that they don't have any cough or band. This year, we would not have a promenade or a senior march. It's just no way to do it safely with parking, because the tent is going to take up most of the parking lot, so there's no place for really the parents to park. It's also not a good way of watching the parents as they may congregate closely, which could end up spreading the virus if somebody had it. So we really have to try to isolate the attendees. And the kids were fine with that. They understood. Obviously, they loved that, but it's just really hard for us to put together. The next page, dinner and dessert, 7:15 to 8:30. 25 tables. We'll have six people at a table. We'll have food trucks that all need a food permit from the Board of Health. We'll call students table by table to come get, grab-and-go food served. It'll be just like we do at the lunchroom, just, I think they're doing a taco cart and another cart. So they've chosen some food that they're very excited about. We're pretty much following what we would do in a typical lunchroom. It's just, they don't have to wear their masks. They're at a round table, which is different than the traditional lunchroom. We're kind of thinking as your table at lunch, a dinner, that's hopefully your cohort, so you're taking pictures with that group, and hopefully that's your pod. It's kind of our, so if one gets COVID, they're probably all going to get COVID, you know. I hope nobody does, but that's kind of your pod. That way, it's not spreading beyond. But I'm hoping our mitigating factors prevent anybody from coming sick. Dancing and socializing, 8:30 to 10. So students will have the opportunity to dance and socialize. They have to wear their masks when they're dancing. We'll have music, but they can't sing. That's coming from the DSE in terms of, they said they're not allowed to sing. It's one of the things in their guidance. They need to be six feet apart, which obviously sounds dancing six feet apart. When you put down lines and they're six feet apart, it really doesn't seem that far, in all honesty. Hundred students on the dance floor at a time, that's based on the capacity in the tent and how many you can fit six feet apart. For pictures, the professional pictures, we'd have group pictures. Students may take off, students must keep their masks on for any group photos. The only exception is when the attendee may have a professional picture taken, is if it's their table. So their table can all take off their masks together. And then dates, obviously, can take off their masks together for their professional pictures. The bathrooms will be inside, so we'll have a system where they can flow into the bathroom and out of the bathroom. We'll have a log, so we'll keep that organized. Mask break area, so if a group of kids wanted to take off their masks and just kind of have some more distance, we'll have a designated spot for that. Police detail, we'll have three, one at each entrance. Because we're on-site, there are people that drive through town and drive by the lots, so we want to just keep it safe. So we'll have a police officer at each entrance to the tent, to the bathrooms, and to the mask break area. And then the departure, we're going to let students leave. The prom will end at 10, but we're going to let students leave as early as 8:30. Usually, in the past, we would have the students there the whole time, because we take the buses. But this year, if there's a student that just wants to go to a prom because they want to get dressed up, they want to have a nice dinner with their friends, but they're really not into the social distance, mask wear, and dancing, they can leave after dinner, just to kind of, we would still do the random breath-alysing. And then custodial cleaning, we'll have three custodial details to assist us there. So that's the plan that we're proposing. Obviously, we can still make changes, and we'd obviously want your support. So if you don't support it, we don't want to obviously move forward with it. I just think it's tricky with, very rarely would I recommend a prom when the DSE is saying they're not recommending it. So this is kind of a rare thing for me personally.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Any questions or concerns from the committee?
I have a question. So where is the tent? You said in the parking lot, but which parking lot? By the stadium or?
Parking lot adjacent to the stadium.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, thank you for taking the time to put this all together and working with the committee that you formed for these kids. These kids have missed so much already this year, just in normal land, that I'm sure they're very appreciative in their families that they get to have this moment if we do. So thank you for that.
Anyone else?
I do think that you and the students and the Board of Health Agent have put a lot of work into this plan. This is very thought out, and I appreciate it greatly, and I agree with Mrs. Maroni that these kids have lost out on a lot, and it would be really nice to give them a safe option to have prom.
Thank you. I do have one other point to add, is that the biggest risk we're running into with this Friday, May 28th, is one of the DSE guidance was if you're going to have a prom, you do it after the last day of classes. Our prom, May 28th, is after the last day of senior classes, which is May 26th. The problem is, if somebody does test positive, that would basically take them out of graduation on Friday, June 4th. We talked about, do you have a prom after June 4th? That's not something the kids, I think, would be very excited about. I think we have to be very transparent with kids about that 28th. The bottom line is, somebody could test positive even if you didn't have a prom. So I think that's the thing about it as well.
Just, obviously, Jill and Melissa and everyone's mentioned all the great work that's gone into it. You did mention that you have about 140 as sort of the estimated list. What percentage of response is that? Do we think we could go over 150 with chaperones? Are people going to be turned away if they're not in at a certain time? I guess what's that process like if we're getting close with chaperones and stuff?
The kids have had three opportunities to sign up. They had a general survey that went out. Then they had a confirmation of their general survey to make sure that what they selected was what they selected, if they wanted to bring an outside guest. And then they had one last opportunity to sign up. So everybody that wants to go, as nobody's been turned away. Once we realized, we were able to take guests. So right now, if we're at 140, 142, if nine people came and said they wanted to come, we're not going to go and now say the guests can't come. They've had three opportunities.
Right.
So I think we're at our number. I don't see much moving, except when people break up and decide not to take somebody.
And what is the price for tickets? Is it cheaper than usual years? I know they did some great fundraising, fundraising, and I guess I want to say thank you to the Rockland community for supporting the GoFundMe account that was out there. So I'm just curious about, you know.
They haven't set a price yet.
Yeah.
But it's going to be much less than a prior year, because there's no busing.
Yeah.
The tent's expensive, but not nearly the price of a third-party venue.
Very good. Thank you. No other questions?
I think it's great news. I'm really pleased with this. As some of my colleagues have already mentioned, these kids have missed out on, you know, some really important lifetime events over the course of what's been, you know, a really difficult year for them and for everybody. And thank you so much for the leadership it's taken to make this decision. I know it's not easy to go against a DSE recommendation, but I think this is a really important step to take for our kids and for our school community. And I'm really happy for them that they're going to have the chance to be able to celebrate this really important life together, life event together. This is something, if we all look back, I think most of us probably went to our proms. It's one of the handful of really great memories of, you know, high school and schooling and graduating. So I'm really pleased that they're going to have the chance to do that. I know it's not going to look like your traditional prom, but that's okay. Despite everything, I think it's going to be pretty awesome. So thank you for doing that. I do have a question, and I probably should have asked this during your superintendent's report, but now that I've got you both here, I will. It just slipped my mind at the moment. Could you explain what the situation is? And it's probably too late to offer any remedy or anything, but I think it's important to understand, and I don't quite understand, a lot of people out there should, about what the tough time that our Rockland High School football team is going through right now with having just gone 5-0 and not being able to get into the tournament or the playoffs. Is there any updates on that or where they are with all that?
Yeah, I mean, I can answer it to the best of my ability. Rockland High School football team, the varsity team, finished 5-0.
It was actually the hockey team, right?
Football team, I think we're talking about, right?
The football team finished 5-0. That's okay. We are not the top seed in the tournament. The Rockland, they're not doing like traditional MIA tournament. They're doing a, like a cup, they call it. And we didn't get the top seed, even though we were 5-0, because another town, Middleborough, finished 3-1. But the strength of their schedule, based on what's called a power ranking system that all the schools in the state use through the MIAA. So because Middleborough played a team that, which was Bill Ricka, Bill Ricka had a tough, real tough schedule. So because, based on the points, bottom line is, we did not get the number of points in the formula. Frankly, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me as somebody that's not football. I don't really understand it all in terms of how they come up with the math behind which teams get that number of points. But we're playing Mashpee this week, and then East Bridgewater the following week. This was something that the athletic directors in the South Shore all agreed on, that they would follow the power ranking system. While it's not fair, it's something all the athletic directors agreed on. So it's the rule, the math worked out strange. It's not something that's calculated by the South Shore League. It's calculated by a gentleman who works for the MIA, and it's done the same way. Because I asked the question of, well, let's, you know, let's appeal or let's have that conversation. But there's a lot of towns in Massachusetts who played football that had to quarantine. So that's a decision that would impact all the towns that had to quarantine, not just Rockland or Middleborough, for example. Definitely not fair, and I love Coach Licori's attitude in this. He's just proud of the kids for finishing 5-0 right now, and they'll still, I think, keep winning. But definitely doesn't make sense. And it's one of those things that, you know, if you could go back in time, would you say, let's follow the power ranking system? I would say, I think, Rockland's stance, if you know, we haven't learned from this. So feel back to the seniors.
Thank you for filling me on that. I was just trying to understand it.
Does that make sense?
But also, it does make some sense. I understand it. But I just wanted to make sure that I could understand. But also, we had the opportunity to tell that team what a great job, and sorry that it's not going to work out in like a normal situation. But I think I could probably speak for all of us in congratulating them on the good work so far. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Well, thank you, Dr. Prong. Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
Wait, I had a question.
Yes, please.
Do we need to vote to have the prom?
Yes, we do. We have to vote to approve that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we want to think about moving the date so that kids can go to the prom and make sure they're getting to graduation?
Are you asking my recommendation? It would be to probably not move the date, only because June 4th, the longer we wait, the weather gets warmer. I think you're going to be dealing with, I hate to say, party season. I think the seniors have bought in to let's get to June 4th, we're in this together, let's not have any positives, let's really invest in following all this guidance. I think the longer we spread the window out beyond June 4th, I think we're always, there's always going to be that chance that somebody tests positive.
I meant to move it instead of the 28th to go backwards, maybe to the 21st. I know we're not after classes, but I guess that's the, what's the goal, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that if we move it to the 21st, the challenge you're going to run into is, let's say there was a lot of students that came from the prom that tested positive. Now they're going back into a building with 600 kids in the building. So I don't know if that's, I go back and I've had the same conversation.
I know. I just feel like I don't want, I want them to go to the prom. I don't want them to miss graduation. I want them to just have fun. I want them to get everything they can get, you know?
Right. I mean, it's something you guys can decide, but I think it's something that I've gone back and forth on, and I don't think there's going to be a perfect answer.
No, I agree. Okay. I just, I wanted to know if you guys weighed that on. I'm sure you thought of it. I just wanted to hear it. Okay.
Thank you again, Dr. Harrison. So we'll be entertaining a motion to approve of the Rockland High School prom protocols and procedures for May 28th, 2021.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you very much, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you.
Now to item number six. We have the monthly reports for March. We have reports that we will need motions to approve. Five motions for administrators, excuse me, four motions for administrators, administrators, guidance, nurses, and pupil personnel services.
Four motions to approve?
Four seconds.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ladies. Next up is the school newsletters for April. They're always colorful, always very informative newsletters that we get to peruse and be able to see what our children's schools are up to. I encourage everyone to stay updated on these. They're chock full of good information and a lot of smiles. So make sure you're keeping up with your kids' school newsletters. There are a lot of effort put into them.
I just had one comment.
Please.
Before you keep going. I noticed in the middle school newsletter, they had that on Thursday, March 25th, they had approximately 48 grade eight students participate in an after-school Among Us Tournament in the middle school gym, and they wanted to thank Mrs. Bartoloni and Mrs. Gervais for an exciting coordinating, an exciting event. I just wanted to shout out to those eighth graders. We're sitting here talking about the seniors getting to have their prom. I don't want to forget these eighth graders that are not getting that traditional senior club, senior, yeah, Shamrock Classic, that they're, you know, waited for fifth and sixth, and now seventh grade, and here they are in the eighth grade. So I just thought this was really cool that they got to have their own fun thing. It wasn't the Shamrock Classic, but I wanted to say to them, we see you, and we're sorry that you're missing your fun eighth-grade year. So that's all I had.
Great point.
I just felt bad for those kids, too.
Yeah, that's another great event that you see go by the wayside.
Right.
One of my favorite events of the whole year in the schools.
Right.
I'm sure there's a lot of faculty that will be thankful that their hamstrings will be spared, but it is a great event, and you're right, Mrs. Maroni. I'm glad you brought that up. Okay.
Mr. Biggins, I have one question.
Please.
Sorry. These newsletters go out in both English and Portuguese, is that correct? All of them?
Dr. Cron?
I'm not sure if they're all, if they're all translated or not. I'll find out for you.
I know Memorial Parks is, for sure.
And I, I know Jefferson is. I'm not sure about the others, but we should just make sure.
Yeah, I'll find out. It's a great question.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks very much. Item seven, under old business. We have a school building update. Dr. Cron?
Thank you. So construction of the new Phelps Elementary School began last week. There are currently two bid protests underway, one by a company by the name of CTA and a second by a company named J&amp;J. Currently, both protests have been set aside because CTA has filed an injunction to try and stop construction. Brait Builders has been awarded the contract by the town, and they are our contractor. Arguments by CTA will be made as early as tomorrow. And just to calm everyone, I think, in general, we should have complete confidence in PMA and John Clifford, that the process was followed and was done with fidelity, and that these two companies that are protesting are certainly within their rights to do so. But I am very confident that we are fine with Brait Builders and that they will be our contractor, and that everything will progress as, as planned. So I just wanted to give everyone an update on that.
Helen, is there any idea of timeframe about how such, how long such matters take to resolve?
Well, they're moving quickly, so they were ready to hear the appeals last week, and then they dropped the appeals because they filed for the injunction to stop the building process. So that, that injunction may be heard as early as tomorrow. So my feeling is, they're really, they're, they're not messing around. It's not like it's going to be a month away and it's going to hold off construction. We have a contract right now in, in force with Brait Builders, and we anticipate that contract being carried out.
Excellent.
Yep.
Questions, concerns?
I just wanted to add that, as the building committee, it took us a long time. It was not a quick meeting. It was definitely a conversation meeting. We discussed all three contractors fairly and evenly before we came to the decision of choosing Brait Builders. Secondly, I wanted to add that we will be having a groundbreaking ceremony. Yes, you'll see the ground be broken already, but that doesn't mean that we won't get to still have a, whatever they figure out, kind of a ceremony that's appropriate in COVID times to celebrate that Rockland will be cutting ground for a brand-new school.
Yes.
So I just wanted to add that.
Excellent. Thank you. Next up, under item B, we have a request for approval of the 2021 and 2022 school calendar, and this is a second reading. We'll be entertaining a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you, ladies. Next up, under new business, we have a request for approval of senior activities. Dr. Cron?
I am requesting that you approve the senior activities.
They haven't changed much in the last several generations?
But can I add? I'm sorry, Dan.
Yes.
This says auditorium. Last year, we weren't in the auditorium. I meant to ask this of Dr. Harrison. I didn't realize he was skipping out. We were outside. Oh, you're still here. I didn't see. I lost track of you. It says the high school senior activity and athletic banquet, it was out in the field last year. Are we planning on that again?
It's going to be out in the field again.
That's what I thought, just to make sure that we know what we're doing. Okay. Thank you. That's all I had, Dan.
Outstanding. So we'll be looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you.
Next up, we're looking for a request for approval of school choice. Dr. Cron? Any recommendations?
I recommend that the district once again approves school choice. I think it's an excellent program, brings many students to the district, and brings much-needed funding to the district as well.
In my opinion, it's served us very well over the years.
Absolutely.
And served the children that have had the opportunity to come to Rockland School very well. Anybody have any questions or concerns about school choice? Mrs. Davidson?
Just on the application, the school year, in the third paragraph, it just says, school year 2020 to 2021 needs to be updated to 2021 to 2022, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
And is there a number or a cap due to COVID protocols for next year?
There's all, the only cap is space, so yeah, indirectly. It's connected to COVID. We've capped, we've only closed a few classes, I think a couple third grades at the Estin are closed, and one at the Jefferson, perhaps a fourth grade.
Yeah.
But everything else is open at this time.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll entertain a motion for approval of school choice?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much. Item nine on tonight's agenda is, as every week, public service announcements.
I think we missed the elementary student-parent handbook. Did we take that off? Okay. Thank you. No one told me. Apologize.
No problem. Okay. So public service announcements. We'll start from left to right. We'll start with Mrs. Hennessy down the end.
I don't have much. I guess, I think the countdown is on, probably for most students and staff, for April vacation coming up next week. So just hope everyone enjoys the break and, and stays safe and enjoys, hopefully, warmer weather to come. So that's all I have.
This is Dr. Small?
So I want to start by thanking Mr. Mills for his 18 years of service to the school committee and to wish him well. The town of Rockland owes Mr. Mills a debt of gratitude for his diligent work that has shaped the schools in Rockland over his tenure as a school committee leader, member. So thank you, Mr. Mills. Our elementary school kids have officially been back to school for over a week now, and I would like to express my gratitude to our teachers, school staff, administrators, and members of this school committee. I know that our middle and high school students are not yet back full-time, but will be by our next meeting, and I'm excited for them and want to wish them a smooth return to full, in-person school. That being said, it wasn't so long ago that my children were all home on a hybrid schedule. A good day meant that I only made one child cry, and a not-good day meant everyone was in tears, and that sometimes included me. I remember the feeling that I was failing as a mom, and while I know that this has not been everyone's experience, I also know that my experience was not unique. You may have heard the quote, "We are not all in the same boat. We are in the same storm. Some of us are in super yachts, some have just one oar." This quote by Damian Barr was initially featured in the New York Times, eloquently describes the impact of the pandemic. It has since made rounds through social media, and I speak it because I find it truly resonates with me. Each of one of us is having a different course through this pandemic. Our resources are different, our demands are different, our individual worlds are different. We've been asked to stretch and adapt in ways that we have never imagined, and there is a price to pay for that. In the medical community, we've seen mental health issues in children come to the forefront in a way like never before. Our experience is now being quantified in the literature with a reported doubling in pediatric anxiety and depression rates. Locally, and anecdotally, I can tell you that across the state, we've seen children and teens in crisis at two to three times pre-pandemic rates. Literature is also starting to be published demonstrating that the boat is different for parents. No one is saying that the storm has easily been weathered by anyone, but the additional stresses of being a parent during the pandemic have also caused an increase in adults requiring support and treatment for mental health issues. I want to remind everyone that mental health is health. Mental health is important, and it's real. Feeling sad, or worried, or overwhelmed may all be normal for, with what is going on around us. But if you're having difficulty coping, unable to do the things you want or need to do, if you're having issues or a concern that your child is, I urge you to reach out and access resources that are available to help. If you had a toothache, you would see the dentist, and if you had chest pain, you would see the doctor. If you're having a mental health complaint, please reach out to your healthcare provider to start accessing these resources.